All right, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today at the Fight for Medicare Town Hall Meeting. This has been the theme of our conversation, emails, messages that we have sent out. And and also the prior town hall meeting focused on that. And what we would like to do is, most of our town hall meetings would be sort of general topics. We would cover a wide variety of questions and concerns or thoughts and ideas. As part of that discussion, for this one, we are actually going to focus mostly on Medicare. So why didn't we get going? And many of you have sent in questions in advance. I totally appreciate that. And some of your questions, we have already responded back. And if we have not covered them with a reply back, we will very likely bring it up for discussion at this at this town hall. So thank you so much for joining again. And we will get going. I do want to start with talking about the current state of the election. You know, the voting big voting is already started. You have absentee ballots in your mailbox. If you haven't find found it, please call the registrar of voters in your county and ask them. And it's time to vote essentially, and I've heard from hundreds of people already that they have voted. And it's it's our civic rights, so we should make sure our voice is heard. And it seems to me that the district is clamoring for change. And you know, we have had status quo for many, many decades. And it's time to bring some new energy, new leadership, new ideas, and innovative approach to problem solving. And we are excited, we are energized, and we are ready to serve. So I will not dwell too much on campaign talk. But I would like to get going with this discussion on Medicare. I do want to make one last point, which is you know, Anna Eshu, she used to do about seventy percent in most elections and most general elections. And when we first ran in twenty twenty, she dropped to about sixty two percent or yeah, sixty two percent. And and then in the last primary election, she was at forty eight percent. And what is interesting is that her percentage from the primary election always carries over to the general election. And we noticed that pattern with many prior elections. It would just the percentage would just repeat, which was very bizarre. But but there is a theory behind that, you know. So we expect that we are on track to win this. And we are working fast and furious in in conducting an outreach, talking to people, trying to touch as many people as we can. That's the nature of of campaigning. But we have done very proud of what our team has done so far. We have gone to two hundred thousand doors. We have spent one point two million dollars in this race. Most of the challenges would probably spend forty seven thousand dollars. That was a max that we have seen. So we have been successful in creating a narrative about what is important, what is impacting the people of our district. And and you need to raise the money to ensure that your voice will be heard. I mean, that's the nature of politics these days. What we have done is we reject all the dark tainted money. We only rely upon people money. And that will never change. Once we are in Congress next year, that will not change. We will specifically reject all the pharma money, no pharma money for for me. And and we'll keep it focused on the people. I call it people centric behavior, which is what we have done in the city of Saratoga, which got us reelected with the most votes in sixty four years, but not only getting stuff done, but also keeping the issues and the agenda squarely upon the people. And that's my pledge to you. So with that, let's get going. I would like to set an agenda for today's meeting. And I would like to talk about Medicare and how Anna Eshu and I differ in in terms of Medicare stands. And as you can see, how we differ is that I don't need an expert here with me to talk about Medicare. You know, we have we have done the reading, we have done the research, we understand the intricacies of a Medicare system, the pitfalls of it, and we have created a policy after talking to a bunch of experts. And I was talking to a few this morning as well. So this is our policy comes from a data driven approach where we are essentially trying to make it better for everyone here, for for the people of America, seniors. And my plan is to also expand the Medicare program. So we'll talk about how we are different. We'll talk about some of the differences between traditional Medicare and Medicare Advantage. And we will also talk about how you can pull away from traditional or original Medicare. So I'll probably switch between traditional and original. They basically mean the same thing. And 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 then we'll talk about, you know, some of the issues we have seen with Anna Eshu not being the whistle blower while she was the chair of the House of Subcommittee. And I will also talk about why we are running out of Medicare trust funds. And you know, it's that cookie jar and everybody wants to get their hands into it. And since two thousand three, we have seen a lot more success with the for profit entities who have gotten their hands into it, and it's depleting pretty rapidly. And then we'll also talk about the call to action. So if you see, and in two thousand ten, about seventy percent, two thousand three was when Billy got signed by Congress and by George W. Bush, which basically rolled out Medicare Advantage. And since then, we have seen a shrinkage of our Medicare trust fund. In two thousand ten, we had almost seventy percent who were in the traditional Medicare. And now we have shrunk to about, I believe it's slightly more than fifty percent who are at traditional Medicare, and it's shrinking very rapidly. And it seems to me that it's applied to shut down traditional Medicare, to switch to, you know, most of the developed world, they all have a single payer Medicare for All. I I knock on doors daily and I meet many Europeans and they they sing ballads of praise about the system they have in their country. Nobody complains about waiting periods or anything like that. You know, they have coverage. That is important. And they feel they tell me it's a no brainer. And that's the reason why I happen to be the only candidate who supports Medicare for All and not Anna Eshu. The H R thirteen eighty four, that's the Medicare for All bill by Pramila Jayapal. There are, I believe, hundred and eighteen cosponsors to that bill. Every bill has hundreds of cosponsors, because that's the nature of what it takes to legislate in Washington. So you know, there are hundred and eighteen, and pretty much everyone from the Bay Area. And I would Eric Swalwell, Joe Zola friend. We have Jackie Spears and we have Ro Khanna. They all have fallen behind the H R thirteen eighty four, but not Anna Eshu. So so anyway, that's when we when when we are out there in Washington in January, we will see, you will see that Rishi Kumar is going to sign up and be the cosponsor for H R thirteen eighty four. That's for sure. Now, the other aspect of when we talk about the shrinkage of Medicare, there is also the corruption that goes on. And the Department of Justice is currently suing Kaiser Permanente for a billion dollars for Medicare fraud. And essentially, what American companies have done is they have defined or derived or come up with a very elaborative elaborate measure approach to to swindle the taxpayer dollars and deplete the Medicare trust funds. And unfortunately, Congress has sort of played into their hands as well, and we'll talk about how and why. And you know, traditional Medicare today is paying a lot more than what they should because of Medicare Advantage. So we are being hobbled a little bit with expensive system Medicare Advantage that is basically bleeding the Medicare trust fund. And you know, what the Medicare Advantage has done is it's made, it's basically provided an opportunity for companies to rip off seniors. And that's the reason why they are flooding the market with TV ads. And you know, Medicare Advantage plans are not government provided Medicare. They are a private health insurance. It's just that the government pays for it. And what Medicare Advantage is doing is it's hurting traditional Medicare. Because that system is paying for the insurance companies, and in most cases, far more of it would be would be simply covering the cost of regular Medicare recipients, you know. So there is a big problem with this, and the Medicare Modernization Act of two thousand three is is made it easier for companies to prey upon gullible seniors. And that is something that I've been talking about the last few years. And I will keep talking about it because Anna Eshu does not talk about it. And and that is, I I I do not appreciate that, you know, we as a as an elected leader, what I've done is I've brought issues and challenges in front of our people and invited them to take action. It's not about just finding a problem, but also finding solutions. For example, with Centers of Water Company, we called out their gouging of people, and then we rolled out a plan like a mobile app to make protest to PUC a lot easier. And we rejected nine of the water rates. So it's finger pointing is not fun for me. You know, I like to talk about the issues. But before I talk about them, I like to have a plan, and I have a plan for you today as well. Always have a plan. Don't walk into a meeting without a plan. So let's see, I I see quite a few more folks have joined in. Thank you so much for joining us. And let's let's keep going. Okay, so the other problem with Medicare Advantage is overbilling is completely rampant due to risk scores. And essentially, what the Congress did, I wonder which year that was. But they said, you know, we have to track these patients and figure out who is sick, who's not. And this the patients who are sick deserve much more coverage. So you know, sometimes when you create these things, they are not very well conceived. They are not very well thought out. And that's why you have to be careful, you know, how you legislate, because there are there's a fallout that happens from that. So once they did that, the you know, with Medicare Advantage, our for profit Wall Street companies said, oh, look at this, we have an opportunity. And so they basically started marking up the risk scores. The higher the risk score, the larger was the payment. And and CMS, the body has actually estimated that faulty risk scores triggered nearly seventy billion in improper payments to Medicare Advantage Plans from two thousand eight through two thousand thirteen. Seventy billion dollars. That's a staggering number. It's a staggering number. So we have unfortunately played our hands into into them. They are we have made it easy for them, but nobody is doing anything. In fact, some of the reports we have read is that CMS is also at fault because they are really not doing anything that they should. And then you see all the glitzy ads and the spend that is happening to pull seniors away from traditional Medicare. That's the reality. That is the reality of what's going on. And and I I was actually interestingly sent a mailer. It was a three feet by three feet mailer. I kid you not, folded in multiple layers. And this was from someone, and he could see the big money behind the pool to get seniors away from traditional Medicare. They're spending a lot of money. They're spending a lot of money. It's like glitzy ads on TV right now, because this is the open enrollment period. And I've talked to some friends and family members, and they tell me that they always tell their parents to stay stick to traditional Medicare. So think very carefully before you switch out of traditional Medicare. In fact, you know, even the Medicare site that a government offers, you know, there is a lot of push to go with the Medicare Advantage. And that is not good. You know, Forbes has done the research on that. They've written articles. Now, interestingly, what I find is there is also no counter advertisement. You know, the fed federal government didn't know. I mean, CMS knows there is a problem with Medicare Advantage, so much fraud. But why aren't we doing a counter advertisement to keep seniors into a traditional Medicare program? And why is even Medicare Advantage existing today if we have so many problems with that? So I mean, it it escapes me. Now, what Ro Khanna has done, Congressman Ro Khanna, he's proposed a bill to rename Medicare Advantage as Medicare Disadvantage. No, I'm just kidding. He he's going to call it something else. He says it should not be called Medicare because you know, it's a different type of plan. And so that that was rolled out only two days, just we saw that a couple days back. So these are these are shifts that are happening. And I will push for this when we get to Washington next year. Now, Eshu Anna Eshu, we respect her forty four years of political service. Been in political office, but she should have been the whistle blower. And there's one reason why, just one, just one. That is that she's the chair of the House of Subcommittee. She is the chair of the House Health Subcommittee. A lot of people tell me she's got a tremendous platform, Rishi. I will not be able to support you because when you get in there, you'll be a newbie. And I tell them that what you use is a tremendous platform when you have, when you are toeing the line of pharmaceutical companies and healthcare for profit companies. Anna Eshu has accepted about four point two million dollars from different healthcare entities, pharma and and many others. What we have done is we have added them all up. It's a fairly substantial sum. And and Stanford Daily, they actually asked her, you know, why, why do you take all this money? And the justification was not acceptable to me. The you know, the the reason is she is in charge of America's health and everybody wants to be in her good books. But you know, when I was in the city, when I'm when I'm on the city council today, I reject the real estate money. Because you don't want to be tied down by that money around your neck, which makes it harder for you to operate independently. So the failure of Anna issue is that she will not tell you that traditional Medicare has been replaced with inferior plan options. And and that Medicare Advantage is actually Medicare Disadvantage. She should be warning. She should be sending out emails or holding town hall meetings, warning people about the risk of going with Medicare Advantage and fighting very hard to protect the Medicare Trust Fund. Unfortunately, she's not doing that. And all these issues with Medicare is basically it's denying the healthcare coverage for seniors. And Anna issue is not feeling your pain. The congressional members are not feeling the pain because they have five star coverage. They have some very, very solid healthcare plans that provide them what they need to manage themselves and their families, but our seniors are being left in the lurch. I'll tell you this, what is also happening is that the when you are in the Medicare Advantage, there are people who are coding your profile, you know, at the back office, not doctors, not doctors. They are quoting you based upon some results that they see. They are they are inserting codes which indicate that you are a patient that has a serious healthcare issue. And then when you come back in or you're called back in and you're said, okay, here is a problem. You have this cancer or this and that. And they start treating you for that. And our seniors get very stressed. They get very stressed. Oh, my God, I have this problem. And it sort of turns their life upside down. And and why? Why are our seniors getting stressed? Because there is greed rampant that is playing out in the way Medicare Advantage is structured today. And this is wrong, completely wrong. Our senior should be having a good time, going for walks, having a having a good life, playing with grandkids or whatever. You know, you should be relaxed, but they are being stressed out because of faulty healthcare system. I'm going to fight this stuff. This is nasty stuff that's happening. Nasty. This is not America. I'm going to fight this tooth and nail to stop this, because this is something very wrong. And this is the reason why people say, Rishi, you're a Democrat. Why are you challenging Anna Eshu? If Anna Eshu had done everything right as the as the chair of the House of Subcommittee, I probably would not have challenged her. We observed this in twenty nineteen. We saw many articles written up. There were a million people who have died due to opioids over the last twenty years. Million people have died. Million people due to pharma greed. And Anna Eshu has not lifted her finger. She hasn't done anything, nothing, nada, zero. That is very sad. That is very sad. And that's the reason why we believe we're going to win this. And we have to bring some integrity back into American politics. Our run is about ethics and politics. So the question is, why are we running out of funding fast and furious? And obviously, Anna Eshu hasn't brought this up as an item of concern. At least I haven't seen that. So overpayments to Medicare Advantage Plans have been depleting the trust funds for fifteen years now. And so that is one reason. And then also, the Medicare program has become extremely complex. And you know, it's on a high risk list list, and we are constantly trying to to make make it better. We are tweaking it. But unfortunately, when we tweaked it to include Medicare Advantage Medicare Advantage option, we made it a lot worse. And now we are tweaking it. And it's going to become a lot worse with the ACO reach, the accountable care organization realizing equity access and community health. So that's ACO reach. Please go to rishikumar dot com slash Medicare. And you can read my policy position on that. It was formally called direct contracting, and that was you know, there were there were some issues that an independent study had uncovered, and they said, okay, let's go out and roll out ACO reach. So what is ACO reach? It's Medicare privatization. And it's actually hidden in layers of bureaucracy. Essentially, what's happening is that seniors are put in this program allowing a third party profit seeking entity like an insurer or a private equity back firm to step in and get paid by Medicare to manage the care that our seniors are getting. And they will take for themselves a profit that they don't spend on the patient. It's a it's a very faulty model. And if you go to my slash Medicare, it's hyperlink. We have some Rishi Kumar dot com. You know, why don't I just send you a Zoom chat? Rishi Kumar dot com slash Medicare. Please click on this link that I just sent you on the chat window and did you can you comment on today's? Okay, I I will just go to the questions. You know, briefly, briefly, I can see Daniel who's asking, hi Kumar, I can you comment on today's editorial? The Merc by an Anna supporter. Yes, there was a letter that was published. And the letter said that Rishi Kumar is unqualified to be in Congress because you know, he's calling out Anna Eshu's privatization. And that's wrong. That is wrong. And you know, essentially, that the letter, you know, essentially what's going on is obviously, they are trying to undermine some of our statements on the issues with healthcare. That's one. And the industry will protect the ones they have invested in. So it's a direct attack on my credibility. It's the smear. And what I say is that as a mechanical engineer, I've always believed in being very factual, very factual. I'm not a career politician. And thank you for the question, Daniel. I'm not a career politician. And you know, everything we say, we actually have a data verification team. Before we publish anything online or we put it out there, we go through a significant process of verifying everything that we say. And if there is or even an embellishment of something, then we 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 are very careful. And when we say that Anna issue is looking to privatize Medicare, it is because she supports ACO reach. And we have the signed letter on this link I sent you where Anna issue says, yes, I support ACO reach. It's a signed letter. It's got a signature on it. And and there are a couple of documents you can find in there, including another PDF document which explains in greater detail as to what ACO reaches. So is not clickable or cut and pasteable. Okay, well, anyway, if it is not clickable, I'm sorry to hear that, Jerry. But please go to Rishi Kumar dot com, R I S H I K U M A R dot com slash Medicare. And it should be clickable, but I don't know what's going on. Sometimes Zoom can be playing tricks on us. So and anyway, please keep the questions coming. But let 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 me just run through everything that I wanted to talk about as part of this. So you know, essentially, we talked about ACO reach. Now, the the Anna issue is obviously supporting ACO reach, but there are three hundred organizations, including many congressional watchdogs that are opposing privatizing Medicare with ACO reach. They are speaking up against it, but not Anna issue. And you know, essentially, this this is a problem. It's a problem, and we have lots of videos you can watch at our Medicare page. So the one question that I've heard from all of you, from many of you, I would say, not all of you, from many of you is we we got like, I don't know, like maybe hundreds, at least a hundred questions on this topic, which was I'm alarmed by this sort of like tone, like I'm concerned, how do I get out of Medicare Advantage? Or it's like, okay, I'm going to make my picks now, open enrollment period as a senior for the very first time. You know, can you explain to me why I should stick to the traditional or original Medicare Medicare Advantage system looks a lot more cheaper? I also get vision coverage in there, you know, so there are lots of reasons why you are being sort of, it's a hook they have thrown at you. They're trying to drag you into a Medicare Advantage program. So my strong recommendation to seniors, and I'm going to state it here, because people will watch the first fifteen, twenty minutes of a video, and then they stop watching. But my strong recommendation to seniors is to stick to traditional Medicare as much as possible. Call what one eight hundred Medicare and 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 elect not to have your personal identifiable medical information shared with an ACO through a data opt out process. Don't share your data. Tell them, um, opt me out. And I also recommend that you read the October twenty twenty two New York Times article that I'm going to talk about next. And and do your reading. There are lots of videos on YouTube. Just get informed with the facts. It's your health. It's too critical for you to trust others on it for it. So be informed, be informed. You know, don't even trust me. Don't even trust me. Don't trust anyone. Read up for yourself and make the choice. But what I can tell you is that, you know, I'm I'm my my objective in this is to protect our seniors. Seniors can be very vulnerable, you know, with the with age comes you know, it's sort of difficult to make these choices. And I believe that as as an elected leader, I should be very, very transparent and make sure that I'm informing our residents about the issues. And whether it's rising crime or whether it's a water utility company or development on a hillside which will cause a huge fire risk. That's my job. That's my job. What I've done. I've been the whistleblower forever with the community. You know, I don't like to hide it under the under the rug. You know, it's time to talk and then take real action. So this is what I'm trying to do with this one. So my pledge is this, that I will be the whistle blower. I'll always be transparent with you and do the right thing as your congressman, rejecting dark corporate money and influence. And I'll always fight for your interest, not special interest, and I will get things done. So the New York Times article that I was referencing was, it was titled The Cash Monster. Just search for New York Times Cash Monster. And you will find that article, and this was last week. The Cash Monster was insatiable. How insurance insurers exploited Medicare for billions. I would like to invoke Al Gore. And Al Gore said, I would like to put the Medicare trust funds in a lockbox. That was twenty two years ago. I was watching that when he said that. I was watching that. And I didn't truly understand the ramification of that. But but I know why he said that, because that everybody is poaching into that money. And everybody wants to get their hands on billions and billions of dollars. So so when you look at today, what's going on? United Health Group, Humana, CVS Health, Eleventh Health, Kaiser Permanente, Santana, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Cigna. There are all of them have been accused of fraud by the government. They have been accused of fraud by whistle blowers, and they have overbilled according to the inspector general. Kaiser has been sued for a billion dollars. Now, let's talk about the overbilling, right? So the overbilling is estimated. Nobody knows because it's such a complex system. It's estimated between twelve billion and twenty five billion. Now, you look at, this is staggering. It's a huge number. Overbilling annually. You look at the entire agency budget. It exceeds the entire agency budget for NASA, which is twenty one billion. The Children's Health Insurance Program, which is sixteen billion, US Customs and Border Protection, which is sixteen billion. FBI is about ten billion. EPA is about eight point seven billion. You look at the ways that's happening. Look at the ways that's happening. And I'm so surprised and and stunned that Anna issue is silent about it. So apparently, what in this New York Times So apparently, what, uh, in this New York Times article, Kaiser Permanente called doctors during the lunch breaks and urged them to add additional illness to the medical records of patients. How crazy is that? It's happening. It's real. It's real, people. It's happening. Anthem called, uh, you know, they paid more to doctors, Anthem paid more to doctors who said their patients were sicker. You get bonuses. And then, you know, these strategies have led to diagnosis of serious diseases that never existed for patients, for our seniors. And they allowed the insurers to collect more money from the Medicare Advantage program. Here's stupidity and colossal corruption that is happening. And, uh, it's just very sad. So, let's see if, uh, what, uh, what else can I cover in this topic? Um. So let's talk a little bit about CMS. You know, the Centers, uh, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. They have not been very aggressive. There have been over, overpayments that were reported. And Congress gave the agency the power to reduce the insurers' rates in response to evidence of systematic overbilling. But CMS has turned a blind eye. Someone calls Washington a cesspool. So CMS goes out of their way to illegally promote Medicare Advantage plans. The lack of oversight has basically encouraged the healthcare industry to compete over who can most effectively game the system rather than about care. You know, we created this in nineteen sixty-five to care for our seniors, to take care of them. But unfortunately, they have been exploited. And they have been told, many of them have been told that you have this disease when you don't. And they start this medication when they should not be doing that. It's very sad. Congress has failed to a large extent. And either they are being fooled or the lobbyists have too much influence. Congress decided to pay more for sicker patients. Do you remember what I said before? Like, this is what they did. And it opened up a whole Pandora's box for overbilling. So three insurers, which is Humana, Elevens Health and Kaiser Permanente, were accused of paying doctors or nurses more for recording additional diagnoses. So, you know, essentially, with Medicare, the for-profit healthcare organizations are playing with senior health. These are diagnoses that are stressing out the seniors out. And it is flawed. It's a flawed. It's a cash monster. And, uh, you know, whistleblower is Dr. James Taylor, a former coding expert at Kaiser. And he said, he was instructed to find additional conditions worth tens of millions of dollars. It was an actual agenda item. And adding that code for a single diagnosis could yield a substantial payoff. So, so that's what is going on. That's what is going on with our healthcare system. And that's the reason why we are focusing this run quite a bit more on these issues with Medicare. And, uh, obviously, you know, my plan is to expand Medicare. Uh, I'm a proponent of Medicare for All. I would also like to expand Medicare for our seniors to include vision and dental. That should be it. And, and the thing is, if you stop these fraud, then it's very easy to cover vision and dental for our seniors to extend the care. Okay, let's see, uh, let's see what, uh, some of the questions, uh? Okay, work for Jerry. Thank you so much, uh? Turn off autoplay. Thank you, Jerry. I will turn off autoplay. Somebody made a comment, turn off autoplay on the website. With the, okay, we can do that. And, uh? Yeah, there's a question from Bob. Why did issue not raise the alarm when insulin's expense was limited to seniors but not for nonseniors with diabetes? You, you know, essentially, and this is the problem with the system where, you know, they, they are essentially preventing, they're protecting their own profits at the risk of not providing coverage. For example, you know, what they also started doing was they started sending people to the homes of seniors. And, uh, the facilities that they provided for them, because the storage of blood, et ceteras, was not very well done. That would lead to additional diagnosis of diseases. And, uh, and essentially, if you were going to become a cost burden, then they would not provide you the coverage. Now, you know, when you look at like, for example, heart attack patients, uh, in that same New York Times article, they actually talk about that. Uh, they were not brought back into the office because it would mean, uh, a lot more, uh, uh, TLC for patients. And they preferred not to do that. So the coverage was not happening because the, the whole plan was, uh, was created from an intention of profit, not so much a betterment of healthcare. And this is the reason why, Bob. That's an excellent point. And Vincent, uh, Vincent is, uh, saying something, uh? Will it be difficult? So I'm on a Medicare Advantage and want to switch back to traditional Medicare. Will it be difficult to get MediCap insurance? Can I be denied MediCap coverage at this point? So that's a good question and we don't know the answer for that. I don't know the answer for that. We'll have to, we'll have to do some research on that. But my take is simple. Uh, the answer is very simple, though. That, uh, our, our, our senior should be allowed to switch into any plan they want and they should be covered, uh, every single day of their life because this is the federal program. So it, it means that they should be allowed to switch. And they should be, uh, covered in, uh, in any which way that's possible. And, uh, the, the problem is, you know, there are there are special interest groups that have their hands in the pie. And there are some major funky stuff happening with, uh, with the Medicare program. So I wouldn't be surprised if they are denied the MediCap coverage. But we'll look into that, Vincent. Thank you for the question. And, uh, how are you paying? Jerry has a question. How are you paying for expanded Medicare? So the funding, funding issue, we have addressed that in, uh, in my slash Medicare paper that we have written up. And we wrote this in twenty nineteen and we have tweaked it. But essentially what we talk about, you know, let's, let's give you an example. When you spend a dollar in premiums, uh, twenty-five percent of that goes towards administr- administrivia to, to, let's say Kaiser Permanente. But if you went with the Medicare program, Medicare for All, you are trimming down the expense, the overheads to three percent. So that is significant amount of savings. And then if you run a good structured program, you can get better health outcomes compared to what we are getting today. And so you can reduce the, the drain on, on taxpayer dollars. You can really reduce it down. Now, you look at South Korea and Japan, they have a single payer, uh, healthcare system. And they were pandemic-ready, you know, by the very first week, they were doing drive-through testing and things like that. So, uh, Japan has, uh, a single payer system which is equivalent to like, uh, Stanford Healthcare. So you can create a system which will be very, very effective and still end up optimizing your expenses with that. Now, we also talk about, uh, we have spent about, uh, ten trillion dollars in wars over the last twenty years. And, uh, and this money could be put to use right here and to fund the healthcare needs of America. You know, we are, uh, we, we spent a lot of money in Afghanistan and then we basically left the country. It came to almost like a net zero. If you had spent it on education or building an economy, that would have been much more worthwhile. And so I feel that, uh, sometimes our foreign policy is a little off the charts. And we can put that money to use right here in America. And, uh, and I do believe that Medicare system will create lots of optimization in our healthcare system. If you see the chart, if you see the graph, uh, you will find that, uh, the, uh, it has been an exponential spike in healthcare cost over the last twenty, thirty years. So the healthcare for-profit system is working extremely well. Now, uh, you know, they, they're doing a bunch of good. They rolled out the vaccinations. You know, I give them credit for it. But, uh, you know, there shouldn't be greed running rampant. And I challenge that also with Silicon Valley Tech. That when you start trampling upon people, you know, we need to have a playbook. In fact, that's my policy for Silicon Valley Tech. You need to have a playbook where you, you operate with the, the greater good, intention of greater good. And you operate with the conscience because it's not just greed. You know, you are there to service the people and it should be, uh, it should stem from a, from a position of goodwill and not so much blatant exploitation of people. And I think it's time that the healthcare for-profit entities have a change of heart. And it will only happen if Washington takes that stick and reveals it. Unfortunately, they are not. They are in cahoots with the lobbyists. And, uh, this is what is wrong. And, uh, okay, I see another question. Uh, vision and dental are not cheap. Should you not focus on getting medical Medicare working first? It's very hard to pick. Oh, yeah. Okay, good point, good point. I, I would actually say that it's very true. I think we should, uh, focus on getting the fraud. My number one priority right now with, uh, with Medicare is to get the fraud out. We need to clean it up. We need to clean it up. We need to put this on the agenda. Anna issue should put those, put this, I challenge Anna issue to put this on the agenda of the House Health Subcommittee and have a discussion on the Medicare fraud. She has not done that. She has not done that. And I challenge her to do that. But, uh, many, like, the legislation she proposed was to increase the patent protection of biologic drugs from five years to twelve years to prevent generics from being rolled into the market and protect pharma profits. That's the, that's a fact. Go to rishikumar.com slash F A C T S. Rishi Kumar dot com slash F A C T S and you will find, uh, links that we have in there. Everything we say has been validated. And this is the fact that Anna issue tried to protect the, uh, the generics from being rolled out into the market. Okay, so anyway, I, I think, uh, we covered a bunch of things. Uh, we covered a quite a few. I see a many questions here which talks about how do I switch over to a traditional Medicare? And we will, uh, the, the simple answer is to call eight hundred Medicare. But we will also send out a district-wide email on this topic to provide any more clarification and to also clarify Vincent's, Vincent's question. So that's all we have. It's about two fifteen, uh, two fifteen or so. And I have to run to my next meeting. I'm so sorry about that. Uh, again, my email is campaign. Let me just, uh, text, uh, send on Zoom chat, send this on Zoom chat campaign at rishi twenty twenty-two dot com. If you have any questions that we did not answer or you would like to, when's the next meeting? So our next meeting will be on, let's see. It, it will be on October thirtieth, which is a Sunday. And it's always our, our, the final Sunday, the last Sunday of each month is when we schedule our town hall meetings. So please join that last town hall meeting on, uh, Sunday, October thirtieth. And, uh, by then I would say eighty percent of the people might have voted. Nobody's going to show up or perhaps they will. But I will be here and waiting to hear and talk to people. So again, I thank you all for joining in. I truly appreciate that. And, uh, you know, if, if you feel that I said something which was not, uh, right, I'm always happy to be educated. I'm always willing to listen to the contrary opinion. Please do send me an email or call me. My phone number is listed at the very bottom of the website. And, uh, thank you so much. I truly appreciate that. All right. Enjoy the rest of Wednesday. Bye, everybody.